Go ahead.
Good evening, welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council meeting number eighteen on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting is hereby called to order. May I have the statement of notice of publication? Dr. Collier?
In compliance with chapter two thirty-one of public law nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, a remotely viewed zone has been published in the Holmes Tribune on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the borough website and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Crenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Gindi?
Here.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
Council President Seula?
Here. Just may I salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. No more silence. Thank you. Please be seated. Our note of confirmation, the world's presentations. However, we do have forty agenda session. Mr. Zanga is not here tonight, but our business administrator, Arturo Ladeski, will report on anticipation of series two thousand and twenty-two A. Mr. Ladeski?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two bond sales a year. The next one will be coming up in December. This one in November, if you noticed, is only for twenty-two thousand dollars. That's a no interest bond that we take from one department, give to the parking authority during the interim for their use for payment of employees and stuff.
Very good. And by the way, we also thank you for getting rid of the barriers. Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. There are no ordinances, there are second reading ordinances, but we have a slew of first reading ordinances. And so, Madam Clerk, shall we begin two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-five?
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-five, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending chapter one twenty of the Borough Code in the Borough of South River entitled cannabis.
Your pleasure. On the ordinance.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-five on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. on December the fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second motion made by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilman Gindi. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
We will revisit this on December fifth. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-six, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-two thirty-six, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, creating chapter two oh one of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River entitled liability insurance registry.
Your pleasure. On the ordinance.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-six on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. on December the fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second move by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
We will revisit this on December the fifth. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-seven, Madam Clerk.
Two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-seven, ordinance authorizing various federal housing and community development grant improvements and equipment located in the Borough of South River, the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Your pleasure. On the ordinance.
Mayor, I move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-seven on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. on December the fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kretchinsky of Mr. Seula's motion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes. We will revisit this on December the fifth.
Moving on to our reports, as we officially do, beginning with Mr. Kunch.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one roads are done except for the punch list. We reissued a updated punch list to the contractor. Two thousand and twenty-two, pardon, two thousand and twenty-three, the contractor has contacted us. He'd like to start some concrete work. I'm working with Mr. Ladeski on trying to schedule it around the municipal building so those pavers can be replaced without too much interruption to the function of the municipal building. Look away, we haven't heard from the D O T yet, but hopefully soon. Substation, I talked to the contractor. He thinks the skater system's about two weeks out for him to get the material. He said he can start running some lines in the meantime he will. And well number two replacement, the backload preventer and the air gap is out to bid, received on, will be received on November thirtieth, and we're moving ahead on the sodium hypochlorite storage tank. And that is it. Okay?
Anything for Mr. Kunch? Thank you, sir. Mr. Zanga is, uh, how? Please, Chief, so that leaves, uh, Mr. Sora is, the D E P W?
Yes, sir. Next Thursday is Thanksgiving. It'll be closed Thursday and Friday. There'll be no garbage collection that Thursday. So that route will be picked up on Wednesday, so put out your garbage Tuesday night. Also, the recycling will be, Thursday's recycling will be picked up on Saturday. There'll be no bulk pickup on Friday, and the information could be filed in the calendar. We'll put out Facebook, the website, and send out a mix-all also.
Very good. And I assume that now that they have dared to mention that four-letter word beginning with S ending with W, we have enough sold for ourselves?
Yes.
Nothing? Very good. Anything for Mr. Sora's? Chief, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. The only thing I have is, uh, thank you again for last week for the ceremony presented, Chief. And I just want to debunk some rumors that we have regarding that accident that occurred on Virginia Street. There's rumors going around that the person hasn't been charged yet because they know something in South River. That's totally false. That investigation is still with the prosecutor's office. We're still waiting for results from the lab down to state police. Eventually, once we get all that stuff, the prosecutor's office, who is handling the investigation, who is the lead in investigation, will put out a press release. So anybody that's creating controversy on these social media websites, please stop because the only thing it does is it hurts the people that are involved.
Well said, sir. Well said. Anything for our chief, Madam Clerk? Very well done. Little good stay of the morning of the, uh, which was not our fault. It's the old Corpus Christi school, but that was quickly resolved. Thank Mr. Gindi for his intervention there. Thank you for you because I know that you were up early trying to make phone calls and handling those things, but otherwise the election went very smoothly, so congratulations. Would you like to comment on our added resolution?
Sure, Mayor. Um, we have a resolution. It's two ninety-eight to be added to your agenda, the consent agenda tonight. It's to authorize me to formally offer for sale lot one fifty-one, lot two point zero one. It's a small piece of property. Um, it has been described to me as somewhat like a driveway. Um, and this just authorizes us to contact the adjoining property owners to see if they would like to purchase it. They have already expressed the desire to purchase it. That out there.
Very good. Mr. Ladeski?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. If you weren't aware, over the weekend, East Front had a large water main break. To cooperate with them, we told them to shut off our interconnection, and we had no trouble supplying the borough with our own water for the whole weekend. So that worked well. Um, just as something on resolution, number two eighty-seven, to authorize purchase and installation of playground equipment at Daley's Pond. This is a pretty extensive playground that we put up there, and it's been helped by a large donation from a private citizen. So that should be done in the first quarter of the year, we hope. It seems that that supply chain is easing up a little. So that's all I have there.
Excellent. Anything for?
I have a question, Mr. Ladeski. For resolution two eighty-nine, uh, it says that we're rejecting the bids for the water meter replacement project.
Yes.
Um.
We rejected them because the original bond was, I believe, two thousand and thirteen, and at that time, we came up with a number on the cost of the meters at that time, and we put aside a million dollars in that bond, I believe it was. But the bids came in four to five hundred thousand dollars above that because of the cost of the meters. So what we are doing is we're going back and looking at, um, some of the newer meters and the commercial meters. The newer meters can be, um, adjusted so we wouldn't have to change them, and the commercial meters will leave for now, and we're going to reduce the amount of meters and go out for bid again, and we believe we'll hit that number of the money that's available.
Okay. Are you bidding out the project as a whole, or are we doing it in phases?
Well, we, we, we were bidding it out of the whole the first time. Second time, it'll be a whole, but there will not be complete meter replacement. Some meters will be adjusted. And in that, um, in that bid also included that the company getting the meter bid will inspect every house in South River for lead line going into it. We will then have a hundred percent inventory to know what we have to replace, and we will fulfill the D E P's requirements. Very difficult for our employees to do it, getting access, but these people have to get access to put in the new meters. So we included that in the bid.
Uh, my other question, but Joe's not here, was, um, I knew there were a few residents that still wanted to get the water meter readers installed on their water meter. Did those come in?
Still want to get a remote in now?
Well, since last year, I think we had a list. They're still in, okay. Since last year, we still had a list, and I knew that we were doing this, uh, project, but because of the time that it might take for us to replace these meters, there were still residents interested in getting that outside meter readers of that.
Hey, I'm not sure we, we were able to get the outside meter due to supply chain.
Yeah.
I know we're having trouble getting meters, period.
Yeah.
So that's why they weren't done. But now the meters, that seemed to loosen up. The bidders seem to think that you get the meters, but in four months of work contract. So we would see that early next year.
Okay.
Speaking of water, someone complained to me that on New Street, there is a fire hydrant covered with a plastic pad. Obviously, something's wrong with it, but he said that there's water coming out of it. Can you check that? See what, see if something's happening with it up there? Okay. Because she asked, when, when is this going to be fixed? I said, well, when we get a fire hydrant to do it. It's three of them that, you know, we have problems getting, so thank you for looking into that. Our comments on our various liaisons that we have. Mr. Gindi?
Nothing, nothing.
Yeah, but our meetings are all packed, so after the beginning of the table.
Anything else you want?
Anything.
Mr. Olivera?
Yeah, just from a retrospect, basketball signups will be closing on November eighteenth. K through second and third through fifth will start on November twenty-first, and six to eight will start on November twenty-eighth. Wrestling will start on November twenty-eighth as well, with the registration date closing of November eighteenth. And our competition cheerleading, um, will open sometime in the week of December fifth, and skill evaluations will be held the week of December twelfth for team placement. That's all I have there.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kretchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Office on Aging has, I believe, more fear going on before the end of the month, uh, before they start in December. We're coming upon Thanksgiving very rapidly, and, uh, there is quite a bit more police presence on the streets, as everyone has seen, and that's hopefully slowing some of these people down to be a little bit more conscious of where they are and where they, how they're traveling to our town. But that, that's all I really have right now, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Shade Tree Commission, um, is working really hard to, um, look at all the applications of tree removal and, and, um, people who actually want to plant trees. We had about eleven requests for tree replacements. We started the discussion also on the rain garden and improving those empty lots that we got from Hurricane Sandy. Hopefully, Mr. Byrne will elaborate a little bit more during his comments this evening. But they are working hard to possibly, once, once it gets warmer in the spring, we'll be planting some trees and improving some of those areas where we have those empty lots and homes around there. Hopefully, that'll alleviate, um, a lot of the work that D P W has to do to maintain those and making them, you know, cutting them and cleaning them, and hopefully, stuff like that will improve the area, especially with the, the homes next to these empty lots, and so that people don't park on them, which is an issue that we have a lot on these empty lots. The library board, they're starting to get more events for the, uh, wintertime now. If you look, December third at one P M. is a Saturday. There will be a financial planning event that came from District eighteen, the surrogate's office. They'll be helping with people if you want to get any, any information on that for future financial planning. Uh, and every Tuesday, there's kids' craft afternoon at four thirty P M. if you want to stop in and get a craft for your kid. I know it's getting a lot colder now, and, um, kids aren't outside as, as much. So stop by at the library. You can check their times on their, uh, website. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll say my comments for the end, such as the report. Do you have public comments? If you have anything you'd like to say, any questions or comments concerning the town, if you come forward in the public, you'll have ten minutes. Please give your name and address.
Good evening, Richard Byrne, eleven, this is place, your environmental slash shade tree slash meeting chair. And we sneak, uh, on our plan. So over the last two years, we've done nothing but cut down trees, and we want to start planting them. And so, um, and we got a grant for this rain garden installation. And so, the idea on picking the Washington street lots one, three, and seven, five was elevated and still rains, um, is that, one, as, as, as Councilwoman Mira said, planting trees, street trees in the front is, would hopefully impede people from parking. I've seen people just pile stuff up there like it's a spare piece of land that they could use now. And the rain garden, of course, something like three to four times the amount of rainwater is absorbed by the plants that you plant in a rain garden. And it's just additional buffer for rainfall, um, over, uh, grass. The other thing is these rain gardens require less maintenance than mowing the lawn as, you know, has come up before that the borough is responsible for cutting the grass on these, these lots, so. And the reason we picked the Washington Street location is because it's within the walking radius of downtown, the Main Street. And Washington Street is a good amount of traffic, so it's, it's, it's a good location for the demonstration project. And hopefully, we can both plant more trees next year and, um, arrange for more rain garden. Mr. Trigard reached out to us about concerns, and he's likely going to reach out to you, I got the impression. And, you know, um, about if we plant trees, then vagrants will sit under the trees because it's shady and, I, you know. It falls under the purview of the Shade Tree Commission. You know, if planting trees is not something that we have to public notice or advertise, um, it, it is granted to us by state law and you folks. But we are certainly open to the council's counsel if you want to make your opinions known on it. We haven't actually filed with, with the purchasers yet, so, um, we welcome all input, you know, role. And we also, um, want to join the New Jersey Association of Environmental Commissions, and they have this whole training plan, and they have a, a bus that we can have come out to, like, South River Day, and, um, so, if I give you the request, you can forward it to Mr. Zanga. Okay? All right, uh, I guess that's it for today. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
First call, second call, third call, motion opposed, second motion opposed by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Ballas, all in favor?
Right.
That's the honest habit. There are no mayor appointments. We now come to the consent resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Whereas resolution two thousand and twenty-two oh one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of the routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore being, and it's hereby resolved, the below listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent resolutions two thousand and twenty-two dash two eighty-three to two thousand and twenty-two dash two ninety-eight, two eighty-three, temporary suspension of parking meters from November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two to two, to December twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Two eighty-four, authorizing the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of the school monies. Two eighty-five, property tax refund for a disabled veteran. Two eighty-six, resolution in support of Vision Zero. Two eighty-seven, authorize purchase and install of playground equipment at Daley's Pond Park. Two eighty-eight, property tax refund. Two eighty-nine, resolution rejecting the bids for the water meter replacement project. Two ninety, appointment of two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three winter recreation department employees. Two ninety-one, authorizing person-to-person transfer application of plenary retail distribution license. Two ninety-two, purchase of three police vehicles. Two ninety-three, resolution authorizing certain utility refunds. Two ninety-four, accepting October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two regular and executive session minutes. Two ninety-five, authorizing the bills and claims list. Two ninety-six, resolution authorizing Sergeant Peter Roselli to serve as acting lieutenant. Two ninety-seven, resolution authorizing Patrolman Edward Dumas to serve as acting sergeant. And two ninety-eight, resolution authorizing the offering for sale of our property located at block one fifty-one, lot two point zero one to adjacent property owners.
Motion to pass the second second. Motion by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes, with the extension to two ninety-five.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes, with the extension of two ninety-five.
The resolutions have been approved. There is no new business, so we'll go right into governing bodies' comments on various matters that are going on in town, and we'll begin with Councilwoman Mira.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank whoever put up resolution two eighty-six in support of Vision Zero. That comes from the county as well, and keep Middlesex moving as a way to, um, provide more awareness and, um, like, uh, zero, to be able to support and not have any more pedestrian deaths, I believe that one was. So I want to thank whoever put that one on the agenda. Um, hopefully, we'll be able to be a part of their grant that the county is pushing to receive money for. That way, we can, you know, use it for painting the streets or getting, uh, more crosswalks or lighting up, um, you know, or slowing down signs for the kids, for pedestrians. So thank you to that. Um, I would like to congratulate all of our Pup Warner teams. The season has ended. The boys did an amazing job. This year, the cheerleading teams did a lot more of competing than they normally do, so I want to congratulate the Tiny Lights. They made it to regionals. Unfortunately, they didn't make it to nationals. They lost by point one zero, uh, which they were very disappointed, but they're young in their age, and they'll be able to come back for next year. Our junior Peewees, um, had their regional, um, competition two weeks ago. They made it. They will be going to Florida, and so is our Car City team, so I want to congratulate everyone's hard work in getting there. Um, this is the first time in the last ten years that Pup Warner is actually going to make it to nationals. So congratulations to them, which means I'll be in Florida from December sixth to the ninth this year, supporting our little teams. But I'll still be here December fifth for our next meeting there, just so you know. Other than that, um, I do have some questions. We don't put it in the agenda session, so I see we have two or three first reading by title only ordinances. I'm just curious to know, uh, you know, who put these up here and what would be the change for them? So if anybody can tell me about ordinance thirty-five?
Actually, I'm about, ordinance thirty-five, ordinance thirty-five is correcting, uh, an issue that was in your previous ordinance. It's, uh, if you look at one twenty dash ten, the imposition of rate of cannabis taxes, a user transfer tax was actually, is actually required by statute. It, it was omitted from the previous ordinance. This ordinance is just putting it in, um, and it's, it's required. Additionally, it increases.
We're increasing the permits from two licenses per class to five.
Yes.
Do we currently have any people who have left for the licenses or have them?
Yes, I asked Mayor to consider increasing it because I, I'm getting that much activity on certain buildings in town. Most, you know, they understand it's not retail. They want to grow or they want to manufacture. And, you know, the two are almost used up. There, we have two pending right now, and there's nothing to stop us from increasing the number. So I suggested that, and that's why it's put up.
Okay. I was just curious as to, you know, what the activity was, if they were all gone already. Uh, I know one of our requirements is that they have to get their license first through the state before they get it through us. Is that correct?
That is correct.
They can, in, they can get a conditional license.
Conditional license.
Yes, they can, they have to.
Through the state to then get it to us? So
Yes.
are we saying out of the four, is it four or five classes that we have, are they all gone or? You said two and one.
Yeah, we have, we have mostly, mostly growing, um, and they needed to get, they need to get a board approval, zoning board approval for doing that, and one has now gotten it. Soon as the resolution is passed, come back to the mayor and council to submit a letter to the state in favor of it.
In support of the application.
The other one now hasn't gone in front of the board yet, and I'm still getting phone calls and inquiry about other big buildings in town to be used for different licenses.
Okay. And just so you know, the process is, it'll go, once we get the resolution from the zoning board, it'll come before you to say whether or not you support the application. Then that goes to the state in which it allows them to get a full license if they have a conditional license, or if they don't have a conditional license, uh, it allows them to just go for their full license, and then they come back to us to actually apply for their license, uh, the borough, so they have to hold both of them.
Okay. So that was my question on thirty-five. Uh, thirty-six, the liability insurance registry, who helped with that ordinance?
That is something that Governor Murphy, uh, he signed a Senate bill. It was Senate Bill thirteen sixty-eight. It required, it's required by municipalities. Uh, it requires all business owners and owners of rental units, of multifamily rental units to maintain a specific amount of liability insurance for property damage, something that we have to do. We do not have discretion.
Okay. Um, does the amount that we're imposing on this required, or is that just something that we're adding?
Well, uh, we are entitled to establish a reasonable administration fee. That's the only issue that we really have discretion on, and because we need to actually maintain a list and make sure that it's updated by the clerk's office. So that was suggested, I think, from, uh, Joe and Art to be the fifty dollars.
Okay. Um, I mean, I ran through the ordinance. I understand why we would need them for multifamily homes or rental units. The business one, I just thought, um, most businesses who rent off of a building, the building owner already requires them to have insurance in order to be there. So most of these businesses already have these liability insurances. I just curious as to know why we would charge them a fee just to give us a paper to show that they have it, isn't it true?
Uh. No, it is a.
It's an annual $50 fee that we're adding to businesses for showing their proof of insurance. I'm only bringing this up today because
Yeah.
wanting to be a little more business friendly than we usually are. I understand why we would want it for rental homes and for multifamily homes and liability, you know, the property and outside of the property, but in businesses, your liability is for the business, which is inside, and most businesses have that. So I'm just wondering, are we going to fee the, you know, charge the property?
I don't actually think you, you could reasonably make a distinction between your business owners and your rental units underneath the legislation that was signed. I don't think you would be able to make that distinction and have that be rationally related to the bill to say that you're going to charge your multifamily rental units and your rental units for the registration fee and not anybody else that's required underneath the bill. So, so I do believe it would be required if you're going to acquire it of your rental units and your owners of your rental units, that you have to require it of your multifamily rental units and your business owners. With that being said, if there is a will of council to reduce the fee, I mean, that is something that you can do. That is the only part of this ordinance that we really have discretion. So that is, I mean, that is the will of the governing body. But again, it does require work from the municipality. And the administrative fee is in theory, it's not a revenue raiser. It's not something that you are going to raise revenue for. It is to compensate for the work that you have to do in maintaining it, that's required by the state law.
Okay. Just something that's been.
Yes, I know, it's, you know, when this came out of the air, you know, I noticed this to the turning into the BA, that we have to do this. And it was quietly pushed through in Trenton. And so, yes, with the best of intentions. So it's something we have to do. We can look at this in a year's time. And if the $50 is too much, then we can lower it. But then, you know, to a good point, but we do try to be business friendly here. And we have to play by the rules, which are set by people above and by us mere mortals down here below.
I do also just want to mention to all of you, we already as for rental units, we as a borough require every owner of rental units to register their property as a rental unit. So we have that information. We have their stuff. All they're going to be doing is giving us a paper of their proof of insurance. So.
That's also required, by the way, by the state. They're also requiring us to add that certificate of registration.
Okay.
Besides that, I do not have anything else. Happy Thanksgiving. I hope anyone who can. I can share some of their non-perishable items with the food bank. The Thanksgiving meal crabs, I'm sure, are getting prepared and handed out to all of our residents in need. So happy Thanksgiving all, and we'll see you in December. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gertensky.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public safety workers, our police, our fire, Barbara Wood Johnson, especially our DPW for the jobs that you've done. And the DPW and the police on their performance that they did for us on Veterans Day, I'm very thankful. It went very smoothly. We beat the rain. It was a short, quick ceremony. Thank goodness for that. And I thank you guys, really. Leaves also. If you happen to live near a corner and there happens to be a storm, so you're there, please, if you have the time, residents, please try to rake the leaves away from the storms or a little bit so that the water flow doesn't actually get carried away and not flood the streets. And spread the leaves all over the place, because the leaves do make it pretty slippery when you go to stop or anything else, even crossing them or walking across the street. With that, that's all I have, Mayor. I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you in December.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This past week, I had the opportunity to interview for a trustee position with a human services organization with Middlesex County. I found out that I was elected to serve as an elected position, which has various councilmen or councilwomen around the county and has also some county commissioners that serve on this committee. It's a human service organization, focuses on early childhood services, youth services, family services, housing services, and social services. So I'm really excited to start discussing this with our residents. They provide a ton of services in terms of housing support. I know, Mayor, you've worked with the organization in your private practice in the past. So be on the lookout for that during county event, or town events. We'll be make, make sure that we have a table to discuss everything that's happening. Really excited to work with just an array of people. We have some county commissioners that serve on that as well. So it'd be nice to speak to folks from the county and just learn more about that process. I want to thank everyone again for all their hard work. And I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Until next time.
Congratulations on the appointment. Would you like to name the organization?
It's called PROP. It's the Puerto Rican Action Board.
And I have worked with them in the past. They are an incredible organization. It's not just for Puerto Ricans. It's for everybody who is in need. And this is a prestigious position that Mr. Olivera has been appointed, so congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. Kindy, I've put you on the spot. We were discussing this before. If you could explain a little bit more about the process of doing the, getting a license to grow marijuana. People think that, oh, you just need a building and permission from the town and boom. There's a little bit more to it. After the comments, Mr. Kindy will talk a little bit spout upon that.
Alright, let me explain the whole thing of the cannabis so everybody understands. We may need upping the license. But even though your upping the license does not, does not prove it based on us, it proves it based on this actual state. So the way it works, for example, we had a client that came before us. I mean, they made the newspapers, sealed it up on one mark, or will be able to get it on one mark. For him to even get into our town, he had to get a conditional license first by the state. Now, the state has now put out 37 licenses and only 37 for the year. 12 of them has been already taken by the state for whatever reasons. Now, we are just 2.7 mile radius town. Just because we have five licenses does not mean that all five licenses can be granted to South River. What it means is they will look at us, and if that client fits the qualifications of what it means to have a cannabis or a facility or cultivating, then they'll grant it. Once they have granted that actual license, now they have to come before the actual town. They have to present what they're looking to do before the zoning board. The zoning board still could actually say no, depending on conditions, depending on facility, depends on where it's located. Mr., I should say, One Martin, you know, he fit all the qualifications. Now, if you listen to what Mr. Gertensky said, there was quite a few people that have come before us, to be exact, about four of them. One got denied by the state. One of them didn't fit the qualifications by the state. And the other one right now is pending. So you see how the state is actually leaving out who or what actually gets the conditional license. Once they get the conditional license, then it comes before us. So don't think that just because we have five licenses, five licenses can be taken. I'm telling you now, not gonna happen. They're so strict that Newark, one of the biggest towns in, in New Jersey, had 32 applicants. Out of 32 applicants, only three people got accepted. So, you know, understand how strict they are. It is a huge tax revenue, but just because it's a tax revenue does not mean that we just say yes to anything. So.
Actually, we don't have anything to say, no matter. It's the state's thing.
The state, you have to go and make additional, and then they come to us, so.
It's conditional.
We'll see how it works out.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations to Pup Warner cheerleaders, as Ms. Mira said. They are going to Florida. It's a big accomplishment, so I congratulate. The election, congratulations to Tony and Donna for their election. I also want to congratulate Margaret Kenny as well as Emily Link. It is a, as they always say, a thankless job. So for you to throw your name and a hat means something. I know that you mean a lot for this town, so I hope to see you in the other committees to come in the future. Also, congratulations to Deputy Chief John McKenna. He is the second deputy chief to fit that position in this town. And he is also, once again, another John that has fit that position. Last deputy chief was John Booth Allen. Now, and now that you have been seeing this all over the town, police cars parked on the side of the road, slow down signs, I am telling you, we are at fault almost at 100%. Most of the police officers that are pulling over these cars are actual, are residents. Slow it down. Set an example. We have children on our planet. We have people that are just like you out in the streets. Try being careful. Slow it down. My last and final, happy Thanksgiving. Have a healthy and healthy life.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ballas?
Well, thank you, Peter, for those kind words. I'd like to thank Morgan and Emily too for coming out. It is a challenge, and it's, you know, even to get people to volunteer on committees, it's getting harder and harder. I'm sure come January 1st, we'll see some openings and try to get as many people active again in town. The Veterans Day ceremony was very nice. The rain held out just in time, and I'd like to thank everybody who was involved in that. And again, now this week, schools are half day, so you're going to see kids. This is parent teachers week. So you're going to see kids getting out of school earlier, walking around a little, not at regular times. So just be careful of them and be conscious of them. And other than that, we wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Council President Seula?
Thank you, Mayor. Summit Engine Company, at Station 2, Appleby Avenue, is having a poinsettia and gray blanket fundraiser. The orders are being taken starting today, going through November the 27th. The pickup would be on December 3rd, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon at Station 2 Summit Firehouse, Appleby Avenue. The poinsettias are six-inch poinsettias. I believe they're $6. And the gray blankets are $25. If you'd like to place an order, call Captain Steve Drugos at 732-690-0045, or Brian Hoffman at 732-768-0273. And again, it's a fundraiser, so anybody that's looking to buy poinsettias or gray blankets, please give them a call. I'd like to thank Morgan and Emily for their race, and it is a thankless job. Congratulations to Deputy Chief John McKenna. And other than that, I'd like to just say, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Have a healthy and safe holiday.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations obviously on that thing. Best wishes to all who ran. It was not easy to campaign. It is not easy to win at municipal level. We are at the mercy of the winds of what goes on in the county and the state and the national. But I congratulate to those elected on Election Day. Councilperson Seula and Ballas will be with us for another three years. Welcome back. To those that were not elected, I hope you stay involved. People who care about their country, their state, their county, their municipality are always needed. So again, best wishes to all. From today, you know, heard about the parking meters? We do that every year from Thanksgiving to Christmas. You won't have to pay. It's a way of boosting the local businesses and to support them. The Vision Zero Resolution, Councilwoman Mara explained. I got a call from Bill Neri, the Executive Director of Keep Middlesex Moving. In fact, at this very moment, he's arguing in front of the state for funds for this program. The idea, the ideal idea is to see to it that we don't have any pedestrians being killed in another 10, 15 years. It's going to take that long to do it, but it's an idea, a good idea. And I thank the governing body for supporting it. I told him that we would be supporting it tonight so we could add South River to the list of all the various other towns that have pushed forward for this. I attended lots of various events that have been going on. Of course, one of the biggest ones is Veterans Day, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. We had our ceremony. Nice little group of people that came out, of course, the veterans, the VFW, the American Legion there, council members. You know, they played taps, shoot the guns. It was a nice ceremony, and it's open to the public. You know, you can always come to these things. Because South River, there's lots of things happening. Some are just for certain people. You know, I've attended the former Fire Chiefs Dinner, and Engine Company had a dinner. Could have seen big pictures of that on Facebook. But there's lots going on in South River. I mean, yesterday, I couldn't attend everything. The robotics breakfast in the morning at Applebee's, or at the school. The Imperial Music Center had a concert. There was a cemetery walking tour. There are things that are happening in the town. Look, and you'll find them. Also, sign up for Nixel. It's good to know what is going on. One of my favorite events is coming up, and of course, I call it South River's best-kept secret. The equimetalcal service will be held at 7:00 PM at the Conville Methodist Church on the day before Thanksgiving, the night of Thanksgiving Eve, 7:00 PM. You can bring canned food. It's a 45-minute equimetalcal service. It's open to the entire town. Please come. I say, because we see the same faces every year. And it's just, it's a nice service. Everybody participates. Various churches are there. It's a chance, if you've never been to Conville Methodist Church, to come inside. That's one of the great things about it. It goes from church to church every year. And the council churches puts it together. And it's a chance to see what we have in South River. Like what St. Mary's Most Abrahma had. I mean, some people have never been into a Catholic church, and to see that, that's something, looks like something out of medieval Europe. They're truly remarkable buildings, and they're open for you to come in, so please, please join us there. I don't believe that the Food Night is running its luncheon on Thanksgiving. I haven't seen any, you're nodding your head, yes? Okay, so I haven't seen anything about that. Saint Peter and Paul? Saint Peter and Paul? Okay. I'm sure there's going to be some posting somewhere about that, but apparently they're going back to serve lunch on Thanksgiving there. So again, needy, please, don't be embarrassed. Please come. On today's agenda, we saw about the parking meters, Vision Zero, and I'd like to everybody there, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Support your small businesses also, that's coming up there. Our next meeting will be December 5th. We'll be voting on a number of ordinances there. Probably Council President Seula will be in charge of that. I will not be here, but maybe I should come my way of Zoom. We're going to try it, do something different, to see if we can Zoom in and do these. You'll be able to watch us live, like you did before, on Zoom. The library does it, so we can maybe do it on a larger scale. We're going to try something new. We're going to live dangerously. So, is there anything else? Because I know that there's a very pressing matter today, something about the Eagles are playing. So, anyone else to come before us?
Motion opposed.
Motion to call again, Kindy, seconded by Mr. Seula. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. It's out of the chair.